Welcome everyone to the, let me get my agenda here, the Tuesday, November 21st, 2023, Tomwater City Council Meeting. And before we get started, I know that there's a multitude of people in the audience and I want to make sure that everyone is aware that the City Council meeting agenda has been amended and that we had removed item E on the consent agenda, which is ordinance number oh twenty twenty-three dash zero one four, amending the Tomwater Municipal Code, Section twelve point three-two for public parks and place it in the future meeting agenda. And we will have more community outreach with that. As many of you know, we've received numerous comments from residents who are concerned about how this provision would, uh, in the proposed park management code amendment would address the homeless, houseless in our community and, uh, and would have put it in city parks. Uh, there's information sheets that I believe you all have received coming in and staff are organizing a community conversation that will be held at an, in the coming weeks. And if you want to be notified, make sure that you are on that email list and you will be updated as information is available. So with that, we will go to roll call.
Councilmember Leeta Dahlhoff.
She is excused this evening.
Councilmember Angela Jefferson.
Present.
Councilmember Joan Cathy.
She is excused this evening.
Councilmember Eileen Forthout.
She's also excused.
Councilmember Michael Offhauser.
Present.
Councilmember Peter Agabe.
Present.
Councilmember Charlie Schneider.
Present.
Mayor Debbie Sullivan.
And I'm present. So join me in our salute to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So the first item on our agenda is a proclamation. Uh, and this is for American Indian Heritage Month, November 2023. And Councilmember Jefferson will read this proclamation.
Proclamation. Proclamation, whereas November is the officially recognized month to celebrate and commemorate the heritage of American Indians. It is a time to honor the contributions, achievements, and sacrifices of America's first people and, and a time to learn and celebrate the rich cultural and historical legacy of native people. And whereas Native Americans have inhabited the area now known as Washington State since time immemorial. Today, twenty-nine federally recognized Indian tribes out of state tribes with treaty reserved rights and other tribal communities reside in Washington. And whereas Tomwater Falls, where the Deschutes River enters Bud Inlet was a ceremonial and sacred site of the Stechas people, ancestors of today's Squaxum Island Tribe, their village on Bud Inlet below the falls and the river itself were both named Stechas. The Stechas fished and gathered seafood on Bud Inlet and nearby waterways, and the area was a gathering place for the Stechas nearby related tribes, including the Squaxum, Nisqually, Chehalis, and many other Salish Sea tribes and indigenous peoples. And whereas, as the first people to live on the land, we all cherish, American Indians have profoundly shaped our country's character and our cultural heritage. Native people are leaders in every aspect of society. Their contributions and values have shaped the social, political, environmental, and economic fabric of our community while also enhancing freedom, prosperity, and cultural diversity. And whereas, we renew our commitment to respect in each tribe sovereignty and cultural identity while ensuring equal opportunity for all and continuing to work to strengthen our government-to-government relationships. Now, where, now therefore, Debbie Sullivan, Mayor of the City of Tomwater, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2023, American Indian Heritage Month. And she encourages people to celebrate the rich cultures of indigenous people, honor their sacrifices, acknowledge the unique challenges native people face historically and in the present, and recognize their continued significance in our community. Signed in the City of Tomwater, Washington, and recognized on this twenty-first day of November in the year 2023, Debbie Sullivan, Mayor.
Thank you very much. And we have the honor and privilege of having Tribal Chair Chris Peters from the Squaxum Island Tribe. Do you mind coming up and saying a few words?
Yeah, Howa Tubbs, uh, Mayor and members of council and to all the members of the community. I say Howa Tubbs and to all of you, what I just said there is, um, thank you to all of you and to all of you, my friends and my relations. Uh, my indigenous name is Klapch, um, and my English name is Chris Peters. I'm a citizen of Squax Island Tribe and I serve the Squaxum people as their council chair. Um, and I'm, I'm honored to be here and I'm grateful. As Squaxum people, um, this is so meaningful because we have a true connection with this land and these waters that go back thousands of years. And the connection is land is not a cliche, it is truly spiritual. Um, our people, before we were put on an island, we were bands of people that lived throughout the South Puget Sound area, what we call the Salish Sea. And one of those bands was the Studchas. And they lived, actually had a longhouse where the old brewery is now. Um, we called that, we also called the area after our band, the Studchas, but we also called it Baschutwut. And Baschutwut means land of the black bears. So you can imagine two hundred years ago, a thousand years ago, this whole area was plush and green and beautiful and it was plentiful. And animals and people lived here in unison for thousands of years. The cool thing is, is we're still here, we're still vibrant and we're stewards. And this is meaningful. And this is why we say Howa Tubbs, which is thank you, not only to the leadership of, of Tomwater, but also to the community of Tomwater. Um, because we are what we call Tsiahya, which is relations. You are, we are all relations now. And that's because we're connected. We're connected by this land and these waters. We're all stewards together. And as Squaxum people, that's meaningful because we've always held, the way of us is that we're always, uh, full of gratitude and friendliness. It's been values of ours for thousands of years. And I could, you just bear with me here for a second. When Peter Pugent, he was the first contact, um, Captain Vancouver stopped his ship up near where the Narrows is now, and Peter Pugent in a small boat with a group of people, they navigated all these lower inlets and they came all the way down to the lowest inlet of, of what's now Salgey Puget Sound and met with the Indians there, my ancestors, the Studchas and the Squayeth over in Eldenland. And he described us as the friendly Indians. He described us the friendly Indians, full of gratitude and full of regalia and beautiful looking. That's in his, his, uh, his journal writings about my ancestors. And we hold that so highly. We've always carried that with us all the way today. Cause we value those relationships and that friendliness. It is so important to us. And so as relations, as Tsiahya, it's important that we, um, value and cherish this land and these waters. And we are stewards together because they are sacred to us. And so we're thankful, say Howa Tubbs again to the, to the leadership because of the relations that you've built with us over the last handful of years. And this proclamation is more than just a piece of paper that we sign our name to. It is a coming together that, that shows that we are going to be committed to each other moving forward as well. We value the Tomwater community and we hope that you value our input as well. And we can all move together in a good way. So I'll leave you with that. And I hold my hands up to you with a gesture of gratitude. We say, take care of yourselves well. And we also don't say goodbye in our language. We don't have a word for it. We say, which is, I'll see you later. I'll see you again. So Howa Tubbs, thank you.
So I also want to, uh, make mention that Chris and I earlier this year signed an agreement where we will now have a council for two electives from the City of Tomwater and two tribal electives will have, sit on a new council where we will meet on a quarterly basis, uh, and that will probably start taking place next year. So this will be great. So here's the proclamation and I appreciate you coming this evening. And just a teeny token, uh, our typical pencil that we do provide. So I really, really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so with that, we will now move to, uh, public comment portion. And I have a list here. Do we have anyone signed up online?
We have one person online.
Okay. Uh, do you want to start that person off first?
Sure. So her name is Sue Cummings. I will allow her to talk. So Sue, you can now, you should be able to unmute and speak.
Oh, and before she starts speaking, I'm sorry, I do have something I need to say on the public comment portion so that everyone is clear. Uh, that all remarks will be addressed to the council as a whole and comments should be limited to those related to city business and the speaker shall be generally, will be limited to, uh, only once on the agenda. Uh, comments will be, are limited to three minutes and we do have a clock there that will give you your time. And comments, uh, from the public will be taken under council advisement, but may not be acted on this evening, just so that everyone is clear. So, uh, so sorry about that. Go right ahead.
Okay. So Sue now is able to speak, Sue Cummings.
Yes. Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. I had absolutely no idea that I was going to speak tonight. So here I am. Uh, I have sent, uh, emails to the council and the mayor, uh, along with several other people regarding the overnight encampments. I don't remember what the number of the ordinance was or any, anything like that, but I'm really concerned about it. And on the one hand, I have a deep compassion for people who are in the, uh, the kind of situation where they need to, or, or they need to, or sometimes choose to be outdoors and living in horrendous conditions. But on the other hand, I have myself, my safety, my grandchildren's safety, my daughter's safety, my friends' safety to consider. Um, I have had a horrendous experience, uh, with some people who lived in the encampment off the shoots where two males, uh, came across the street from there and accosted me and was very frightening. And another situation where I had to run up the switchback to the Capitol Building because somebody was chasing me from the encampment. And he was probably either very mentally ill or drugged or both. Uh, another situation where I was driving along, uh, the, uh, where the, I guess the jungle, whatever encampment is, and my, uh, then five-year-old grandson witnessed a person from that encampment defecating on the side of the road. And I had to explain that to him. So it, you know, it's kind of a tug for me. It's a battle for me because on the one hand, I feel a compassion for them. But on the other hand, I don't want to live like that. And I don't want our forests and our parks and, and our land to be trashed, filled with needles and fentanyl and defecation and things like that. So, uh, again, I had no idea I was going to be speaking tonight, but that's my two cents. I am vehemently opposed to the use of our parks or our public lands for encampments. We have to find another way. And that's not the one. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Great. Thank you very much. Uh, anyone else signed up? Okay. So we'll go to council chambers and I have a signup sheet here. Uh, so come to the podium, state your name and your address for the record. And, uh, again, three minutes. And the first person is James Smallwood. Yes, right at the podium, sir.
I'm James Smallwood of forty fifteen Armstrong Avenue Southeast in beautiful Tomwater. I looked at the proposed item and I had some issues that I have not seen addressed. And those issues are cost. If we're going to have overnight encampments, there are some issues that need to be addressed, such as the safety of the people who are encamping. So who is going to be there to assure that safety? That's going to require additional manpower and more cost. What are we going to do to help these people out? They need help. Somebody needs to come in and, in the encampment and see who they are, see if they're registered. Because anywhere else you camp in this state, you gotta be registered. We do this so that we can connect them with the appropriate services to help them out. There are other economic issues involved. These large encampments end up being more trash. The bathroom sanitary facilities are going to be overwhelmed. So they're going to have to be cleaned and restocked on a more, you know, more often. So how is that being addressed? I have not seen anything to that note. This is going to be an additional cost to the City of Tomwater. And I don't see how that's being addressed at all. You know, I feel for the people here, you know, what are we going to do about aggressive verbal and physical panhandling that seems to go along with it? I'm not saying everybody does it, but there is a rise in those kind of activities. So we need to have more resources devoted to these groups and so that the public is protected and so they are protected. There's also cases of people in these encampments being attacked by others. We need more police if we're going to have that. Has that been addressed? I don't know. I'd like to hear about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next person is Connie, and I'm sorry if I'm pronouncing this wrong, Grindwald? Grindle?
Connie Grindle. I live at five ten V Street Southeast, Tomwater. I'm a nurse. I've worked in few states. I've worked mental health corrections, you name it, I've done it. If someone has an issue, a drug addiction issue, mental health issue, you can do everything you can possibly think of to help them. But the bottom line, it's up to them. It's up to them to change their life choices and change what's going on with them. But if you allow individuals to use our parks, I don't call them homeless now. I call them people who choose to live in a tent because that is their life choice. There are other choices for them. So these individuals that choose to live in a tent, to use our city parks for whatever use they want to use it for, what are you going to say to the people that live within walk-in distance of these parks? Oh, so sorry, the crime has increased over a hundred times in your neighborhood? Oh, what are you going to say to our police force when they're already overtaxed and overworked due to the increase of these special people who choose to live in tents who have moved into our area? Oh, so sorry, you just must deal with it. What are you going to say to the person that the dog dies because they picked up something off the ground in the park? Oh, so sorry for your loss. What are you going to say to the child who's got a needle stuck in their hand when they were doing cartwheels through the grass? Oh, so sorry. Let's pray that you don't get HIV or hepatitis C, which is quite, quite, quite rampant upon the population who chooses to live in a tent. What are you going to say to the mother of the child that died because its child thought that pretty little blue pill was a piece of candy in the park? Are you going to say, oh, so sorry? Well, that doesn't cut it. What are you going to do about our safety? Us, the taxpayers who live here in this city, who are the residents of this city, who value this city and value our children and value our old people and who value our police force and who value the safety of our neighbors? Oh, so sorry does not cut it. So I'm asking you and I'm begging you, please, think about the consequences to the rest of us. Think about what you're, have already let happen to our city because you have not been thinking about the rest of us. Please think about us, our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next person is Scott Knapp. Did I say that correctly?
It is. Scott Knapp, uh, live in Tomwater, thirteen fifty-two, so. Been a resident of Olympia, Lacey, Tomwater area for fifty-nine years from the day I was born. I was born in the old St. Peter's Hospital on the west side. What I can say is I've watched, I grew up in downtown or right in Olympia and I've watched things progress over the last sixty years. Uh, what I can say is it's been a slow progression the entire time I've been alive. It was beautiful in Olympia and Lacey forever. And it slowly started progressing into what we're seeing today. And it's been going that way for many, many years. It's just gotten a lot worse since the pandemic and since we've allowed all this non-police, let them do whatever they want, don't chase them and, you know, let them live in our parks. Really, we moved to Tomwater because Tomwater is such a beautiful city and they didn't allow all that. We bought a home up on Tomwater Hill two and a half years ago. Do you want it to look like it does in Lacey and Tomwater, Olympia? Do you guys want that? Cause that's what you're asking for. That's what's going to happen. Period. You're not going to be able to keep it out. Everything I've read in that, you cross all the city park stuff out, you crossed enforcement out. Really? Is that really where you want to take the City of Tomwater? I know that these people are, I know there's thousands more that will pack this room if that's where we're headed. I know that. I've been here a long time and a lot of people. And it's ridiculous that you guys are even thinking about doing something like this because we want to be progressive? Cause we want to help them? I'm sorry, you know, I've already heard it. Those people make their choices. Some of them are put, are out there not of their own volition. But I'll tell you what, most of them are out there under their own, that's their choice. They're drug addicts. And I've already heard, if you don't want to help yourself, you're not going to get help. Well, you can spend millions of dollars trying to help these people. Don't get clean and be there taking your dollars for a while. They'll go right back out and get loaded. That's the bottom line. I've worked in corrections for twenty-five years, just retired. I've seen it all. Top to bottom. And I, I just would, and we'll be here when it comes again. And I'll make sure more people are here. Because that's just what has to happen. You know, sure, they need help, but you know, let's keep Tomwater how it is. Let's keep it nice. You know, that's why most of us live out here in this area. You know, Tomwater's been a beautiful community. From the time I was a kid, I always remember Tomwater was always so nice. I lived in Olympia for, I don't know, forty-five years, lived in Lacey for ten years. And now I'm in Tomwater because this is where we needed to come. Cause this is the last little frontier of, of where things are still really nice.
Great.
So I think my three minutes is up.
Thank you.
There'll be a lot more.
Thank you. Next person is Adam, Adam Torgensen.
Hi, everyone. Thank you. And I'm glad to be here. I did send a bit of a frustrated email to some of you and I apologize for that. Um, if any, my frustration makes out. I hear a lot of the same things that you just heard. This failed experiment, it doesn't work. And going down this road will only hurt Tomwater. I'm really here to talk about the two issues. A, the main issue of whether we want our parks to become open-air drug dens where psychotic drug users threaten us and make our communities less safe. And B, the way that this came about and a consent agenda during the Thanksgiving week. Like, I don't know what, who made that decision, but you really need to reexamine that process that led to that decision. Cause obviously people have something to say about this. I know some of you are sitting there going, well, they just read this wrong. And this really is just, you know, we really are just spreading these rules out. No, keep those other properties separate. If you really want to create a place for homeless people, go buy a place, put them in a maintenance yard, put a facility up somewhere. Don't put them in the middle of our parks. That is so asinine. I, my wife had to listen to me rant when I heard about this. Like, who, who thought this was a good idea? What thinking person thinks that we should do this? This is such a terrible idea on every level. My daughter and wife are going to tell you about their experiences with the homeless folks in Olympia. They've been chased and attacked in the same way. We don't want this in our neighborhoods and it's shameful. I understand, like, like Scott said, yeah, there's a few, there, there are a few people who are out there because they have no other situation, but those folks can get help. I used to work for ODOT. We had to clear out under bridges. You know how many people out of like a hundred would get help, like one or two? Because they have to stop doing drugs to get help and they don't want to. We don't want that in our neighborhood. We don't want that in our parks. We should stand as firm as we need to. And if somebody says that there's a law that we need to break, we need to break it. We need to force that and go to court. We have deeper pockets than homeless people and their advocates. And we should keep our property values up and protect our citizens. This is way too much. So if you're going to force, if you're going to do that, you're going to force me to defend myself against one of these nuns. I don't know how I didn't attack the person that attacked my wife. It was the hardest thing in my life that I did not to draw my gun that day. If that happens again, I don't know that I will be that strong. And then I will be the one to be in trouble. And you guys will have caused this conflict by not keeping them out of our. So I'm, again, I apologize for getting emotional, but this is just such a terrible idea that I'm struggling to put it to words. And that's my living. So please, please stand against this horribly stupid idea. Please. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next person is Liz Torgensen.
Hi, everyone. My name's Liz Torgerson. I'm at three zero five four Banks Lane. I'm at three zero five four Banks Lane in Tomwater, on Tomwater Hill. I'm the wife. So I just wanted to share my experience going to downtown Olympia. We haven't been here very long in Washington. We've moved here about three years ago. Um, we were all walking as a family downtown and a homeless man was angry that we did not engage when he yelled at us from across the street and decided to huck a chunk of wood in my head. Um, it was very frightening. And, um, I find that a lot of people presume that we're going to have these interactions when we go to downtown Olympia. But I feel like if you proceed with the way you intended to proceed on the consent agenda, that we would be having these proximity interactions much more frequently and in the place that we call home. And I feel that that is not safe. Um, I feel that it is unfair to elevate the needs of people who might choose a different lifestyle than we choose, um, their needs over ours as taxpaying citizens, as residents, as people who try to make their communities better. And so I don't have any prepared statement. I just want to say that this is a very bad idea from my perspective for an abundance of reasons that I will prepare if we have this conversation again, because I think that this is a conversation that needs to be eye to eye and face to face. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, next person is Charlotte Torgensen.
Hello. Hello. My name is Charlotte Torgerson. I live at three zero five four Banks Lane Southwest. Uh, thank you for, um, letting me speak today. Uh, let me begin by saying that I consider myself a very empathetic person and that I do not think that stops at the heartbreaking, overwhelming issue of homelessness in this area. I want to find a solution to this that helps the people who are not privileged like I am. My opinion on this did not change despite me having some very negative experiences with some homeless people in the downtown area, but it did make me more afraid and consistently aware of my surroundings, especially when I'm alone. Back in February, I was going to a job interview downtown. As it was wrapping up, a man came in and was standing around staring at the women in the business and making them very uncomfortable. They were all very respectful to him. And as my interview finished, I went to leave. When I heard him ask the owner of the business if I was her daughter. She said no, and I left, deciding to walk quickly back to my car to limit the interaction. I had maybe gotten twenty feet away when he exited the building and started walking toward me. I crossed the street before he could, where I tried to use a group of people. I crossed the street before he could, where I tried to use a group of people as cover and ducked into a business where I know several of the employees personally. I went toward the back of the store and tried to make sure he wasn't following me in. And when I thought I was safe, I poked my head around the corner, but he was already beelining toward me. For a second, I thought I should go up to the employees. But he was already very, very close and I panicked and sprinted out of the store. He left the store and looked like he was going to follow me, so I carried on and ran all the way back to my car. I don't want to be afraid of this happening when I'm alone in my own neighborhood. I want to be able to go on a walk and not be worried that I'm going to encounter someone who might harm me one way or another. There's another part of me that would be willing to sacrifice some of my own discomfort for the sake of helping others. But to say that opening parks in our neighborhoods and the woods by our elementary schools is going to provide anything but a potential place of pollution for homeless people is simply dishonest. It seems like the idea here is to pass this off as helpful or necessary. But I do not think this is true. The way this council went about this issue was inappropriate and wrong. Presenting this as providing shelter to feel like you're doing something helpful while not actually providing shelter or other resources is morally gray at best. And having this be on the consent agenda with no notification to the people in the neighborhoods you are about to affect destroys the trust between you and the people you are supposed to be protecting. I believe it is your job to hear us out and give our opinions the weight they deserve. And I hope in the future, this is not going to be written off as a non controversial issue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So those were all of the individuals that had signed up on the sheet. I will open the floor if there's anyone else who wants to come to the podium. And then state your name and your address for the record.
Debbie Bose fifteen twenty-four Derby Lane. I just have a question. It also says concerning public parks to include all city properties. So is this a field with five residences around it? Would that be considered? Because it's not a park. But I think it is also, you need to consider what is around that. Five neighborhoods with a nice big flat empty field is not a good place for homeless shelter. Thank you.
All right, anyone else?
Hi, my name is Margaret Schaefer and I wrote in to the mayor. Really, first off, very upset about how this came about. We were not notified as, as people in the, in the community. But I have gone through in my lifetime, my husband knows this, terrible situations where I was that person. And I had to dig myself out of it. And so I understand when you're in a bad situation and I have so much compassion. We donate, he knows this. We put together things and we, we make sure that we're giving to others and trying to help. There are also choices. And I know that the, the ditches I dug as a child and as a young adult, I chose. I dug those ditches, I put myself in those positions and I had to also make the choice to get out. That didn't mean that everybody else was going to condone it and nurture me and do everything. And you couldn't have put me at that point in time in neighborhoods. And it's unfair to do this to us. We are the taxpayers that actually are the ones paying to help these folks as much as we want to help them. But they have to help themselves. They have to want something better. And if, and, and just giving is not helping, but you're putting us in danger. I used to walk my dog down at Capital Lake all the time. Until the ginormous amount of homeless individuals were down there shooting up drugs. And it was unsafe and I was being approached as a single person with my dog. I had a small dog, but she was wild. But I couldn't do it anymore. And now you want to do that to me in my neighborhood without informing me and putting this as a consent vote, which is insulting to me. Because at the end of the day, it's my money, their jobs, everybody who's working in here, and they're not. Not that we're not compassionate, who are paying the bills for this. And I find that offensive. I truly do. I work hard, I want to help. We're not helping. Do something different. But it, but putting them as in our neighborhoods is not gonna make a difference. And I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, uh, come to the podium, name and address?
Hey there, my name is Arden Wright. Um, my address is three three zero V Street here in Tomwater. Um, I have been a resident of Washington State my entire life. I grew up in the Seattle area. As a child, I walked all over Seattle, even in the middle of the night with my friends and we were very safe. Nowadays, I don't go to Seattle. I just moved to Tomwater about this time last year. We lived in Bellevue for fifteen plus years before that. I live across the street from a small park with my, some, between two and six kids. We have, we have a gaggle of kids. And we live across the street from a park, you know, intentionally. And myself, I have been homeless. My child and I slept in our car for two weeks. Um, at one point, I very much understand that there is a need that needs to be met for people who are without housing, if they want to be in housing. And I think we all want that for them. I don't think anybody wants to see people sleeping on the streets, encampments, trash everywhere. Um, or be unsafe in their own community or in their home, like I will be when a camp is set up across the street from my house, next door to my neighbor's house. And it's not meeting a need for them. It's just saying now you can sleep over here. It's still not giving them supportive services. It is still not giving them housing. It's still not giving them a place to go to the bathroom. It's not meeting a need. It's pushing the problem off to the local residents who have to now deal with this and then the police who also have to deal with this. Let's find another solution for people who want to be housed. Let's not push it off into our communities. Because we will be the people who are having to clean up with this, you know, in the immediate event. And then we're all gonna have to reconvene and say, how now, how are we gonna do this? How are we gonna move these people? Look at how it's happened in Seattle. Having lived across the, the lake from Seattle for fifteen plus years, we have seen directly how it has occurred. You set up an encampment and then you can't clear it. And so then everybody who lives around that encampment is now impacted. Their safety is impacted. I work from home. I'm home all the time. Myself and my children, my family, we live across the street from the park and we're there all the time. We bought our residence to be here all the time. I don't want to be unsafe in my own home. That's, that's insane. Please don't do this. Please give our unhoused citizens housing, something. Use our tax dollars in a way that will help them. Putting them in parks will not help them. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I, can I ask you again your name? Because I missed it for the record.
Arden Wright, W R Y T.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm Robin Wolf. My address is three zero seven two Vista Verde Lane Southwest. So I work with kids. I'm a nurse practitioner. I'm a pediatrics. I have a kid. My kid has gone to an elementary school a half a block from my house. That elementary school is surrounded by a city trail system, a city park across the street, a city park down the road where kids get on the bus and another city park. So have we thought about where these city parks are located that we're gonna change these rules for? What about the kids? These kids are unsupervised when they're going to the city bus. Most kids for the junior high and high schoolers aren't being walked by their parents to their bus stop. My twelve year old isn't being walked by his parent to the bus stop. He's not being walked home. Am I gonna feel safe having him walk home passing two parks? That could be having homeless in them. I see teenagers already getting addicted to fentanyl, let alone if they're getting surrounded by it in their parks, in their communities, in their housings, things like that. Fentanyl kills people. All it takes is being touched. I've seen toddlers getting overdosed on fentanyl because they touched it on a beach. It's not what we want. I think the unhoused need help. I think they need housing solutions. I think we need more low income housing. I think we need somewhere to put the unhoused. I'm not uncompassionate to the unhoused because I see parents who are struggling, that struggle with housing insecurities. I see it all the time in my work. And it's a huge problem. Daycares are a problem. Housing is a problem. There's all kinds of problems that are problems. But putting communities that are at risk into the parks and taking away a lot of the rules and the legalities is not a solution that is going to fix it, but it puts our kids at risk. Our elementary schools are surrounded by these parks. It's where our kids play. Where are our kids gonna play and how safe are our parents gonna feel letting our kids play there? Look at all the apartment buildings that surround them. They don't have park, they don't have places for their kids to play, so they take them to the park. If they're having a bunch of tent encampments there or places for them to sleep and there's nowhere for them to use the restroom, which most of the parks where I live don't have restrooms, then there are gonna be human excrement all over. And do we want our kids playing in that?
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi. Just a second. Sorry, panic attack. I grew up in the sixties, which I'm sure a lot of you did. My brother hitchhiked across the country to go to Woodstock. The last thing he would do is crap in public. He would not throw garbage around. He earned a living. He earned a living. We have to, you know, I mean, yes, people should have choices. They have to live with those choices. And if they choose to live on the street, that's their choice. They gotta find someplace else to do it, not in our parks, not where our kids are and not where our safety is at risk. I agree with everything everybody has said in here today and I am totally offended by the fact that it's okay to do this. And I'm not talking just about parks. We can't just throw money at them either. Can't throw housing at them. They have a choice. I'm getting to the point where, you know, like, let's put them in jail. I know it's gonna cost us. But at least there's some thing that maybe they won't like. Something that might turn the page for them. Because you know, I, like I said, I grew up in the sixties, free love and all that and drugs and everything else. And I did not go crazy and, you know, you make choices. This is their choice. They can sit in jail then. And I know that's gonna cost us too, but it's a lot better than, I don't want to put somebody in a home. I put myself in a home. I worked damn hard to get there. Thank you.
Uh, do you mind stating your name for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's all right.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Cheryl McCowen. And I live at five oh four North Forest Avenue Southwest, Tomwater, up on the hill.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? And again, I wanna remind everyone that we are collecting addresses and that. And anyone who has emailed the city and received a personal response back from me has been put on the list, so you will be notified of any future meetings so that you can know and attend, so. Uh, and but if you are not on the list, make sure that you get your email address there so you can be notified. What's that? So, so we, we do have notification. We will talk to our communication staff on how best to get this, the word out. And we have newsletters, Facebook. Uh, it's a little harder getting word out at this point in time, you know, when you don't have necessarily the best for newspapers and those kinds of things. So that's one of the reason why we're requesting email addresses, so we can contact you directly and make sure that you know. Yeah. So, so again, sign up, make sure you have your address and then we will. Right. We have, we have meeting agendas, so we, we, sorry, we're in public comment portion and we're not going to have a debate. But we will do our best to make sure that everyone notice is noticed and, uh, and to spread the word the best we can through Facebook and all of our communications. So just make sure you get on the list. All right. And with the next item is the consent calendar. And again, this was the consent calendar. Do I have approval to approve the consent calendar with the removal of item E? So moved.
This is Michael's second.
All right. It's been moved in second to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay? Okay. With the consent calendar, we have approved the minutes of the city council work session for October twenty-fourth. Approved the city council meeting of November sixth. Done payment vouchers. Uh, ordinance, uh, number oh twenty twenty-three dash zero one three, which is the ad valorem for regular property tax for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Resolution number R twenty twenty-three dash zero one one, which is the twenty twenty-four fee resolution. Uh, also the local inner, local inner interlocal agreement between the city of Tomwater and the Port of Olympia for Bush Prairie Habitat Conservation Plan, HCP amendment three, uh, also amendment to the local interlocal agreement with Olympia Lacey Thurston County regarding the creation of the Public Facilities District Modification for the Second Amendment. Intergovernmental EMS contract for advanced life support ALS funding amendment one. Uh, service provider agreement with RH two engineering for the brewery, we, well field development project amendment number two. Uh, service provider agreement with Skilling's Inc. for the golf course parking lot, stormwater retrofit design permitting and project amendment. And agreement with the Confederated Tribes of the Chehalis for fire protection and emergency services and the Brewmaster House repair renovation contract. So with that, we will now move to the public hearing on ordinance number oh twenty twenty-three dash zero one five budget amendments. And Troy Neimeyer will be presenting. Welcome, Troy.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everybody. So we're gonna do a brief presentation on budget amendment number one, uh, before the public hearing. So this is, as you know, we have a biennial budget for, uh, years twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. This is the first amendment for this. And we'll start with a little background information and, uh, you not hear me good enough?
Yeah, he might want to put it a little closer up to you. There you go.
Sorry.
Very good.
Okay. Uh, so we'll start with a little background information on why do we need a budget amendment? Um, as you know, budgets are estimates. Uh, we do our best to uh, look into our crystal ball and estimate what we're going to need for, uh, what we're gonna have revenues and expenses. And especially over a biennium, that's a long way to project. And so things change uh, for a number of reasons. Sometimes we have opportunities that we didn't know were going to happen. And a great example of this is the Talichin Homes Project. This was a seven hundred and twenty-six thousand dollar grant from the Department of Commerce uh, that you heard about earlier this year. We received this in partnership with Habitat for Humanity. And, uh, it allowed, uh, to pay for a bunch of the infrastructure for this, uh, low income housing project. Some, sometimes we run into challenges. Um, an example is the, um, space lease, uh, for the Water Resources Department. We actually budgeted for this when we, uh, developed the biennial budget. But, uh, we didn't know the space was going to be as expensive as it is. So inflation, construction costs and everything else really inflated the price on that. Our insurance is another good example. Due to a variety of factors, uh, our insurance is increasing exponentially and we're gonna talk more about that in a minute. Um, and then we're still feeling the, the effects of inflation and the supply chain. We also have unexpected things that happen, uh, over the course of a biennium. Uh, we have the arson at the Brewmaster's House early this year. Uh, couldn't have seen that coming. So, um, this is something that will mostly get reimbursed through insurance. But, uh, we still need to, uh, put those dollars in the budget so that we have the expenditure authority. Okay, so. Okay, so, uh, some details, um, on the general fund. We've talked about a couple of these with the Talichin Homes Project, uh, the Brewmasters arson. Um, are the general fund portion of liability insurance is a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. We've got a chart there that shows the, the way the insurance costs have been going up. They were holding pretty steady there for a few years. Uh, when it started going up in twenty twenty-two, we were working on the budget for this biennium. And we thought, okay, well, let's put some really big numbers in there, and that way we'll be safe. And, uh, we still didn't hit the mark on those, so, um, see, um, the Tumwater Metropolitan Parks District, um, supply chain issues have, um, made it so that we could not buy new vehicles for that the last couple of years. Uh, those are finally available, and of course, they cost more than they used to. Um, and then some smaller items, uh, we're working on a five-year fire department master plan. Uh, office in the police station and recording fees and auditing fees are going up as well.
One second, one second. Let me turn on your microphone. One, one second.
How about that, Mayor? So our liability insurance went up from four hundred thousand to eight hundred thousand in two years?
That's correct. Um, and I'll I meant, I was gonna mention this again later in the presentation, but, um, early in twenty twenty-four, I'm going to try to arrange, uh, for someone from WCIA who provides our liability insurance to come present at a council work session, so they can tell us all about why it's going up.
One second.
Have we shop three diff- three, four different insurance companies, or is this the one main, uh, company who ensures or cities?
This, this is kind of the main one. We can, we could go out and shop around, uh, but this is, um, this is generally
That's pretty much what the costs are.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, Troy.
Uh, Councilmember Alt Hauser?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we, we talked at the Budget and Finance Committee meeting about a proposal from Councilmember Dolhoff to increase some funding bucket for seniors living in mobile home parks. Oh, there's a slide on that. I'm sorry.
Yep, it's, it's coming up. Okay, um, beyond the general fund, some of the other funds, um, the, the TMPD, TMPD vehicles show up again because of the way that's set up, and we have to buy them with the general fund, and then we, TMPD reimburses us, so that's why they're here in ERNR. Um, insurance for the, the vehicle fleet. Um, the big thing, uh, oh, EV projects. So we put the EV charging stations here in the parking lot at City Hall. Uh, that project was supposed to be done in twenty twenty-two. It took longer than anticipated, and so we had to pay for some of those expenses out of twenty twenty-three. Uh, and then the big thing here, uh, this is by far the biggest thing you'll see in this presentation, is the four point two million dollars for the Israel Water Main Project. Uh, this was originally budgeted in twenty twenty-two, uh, decided to hold off, but then when we made that decision, it didn't get translated into the new budget. So it's been in the CFP. It's been planned for years. Uh, just an oversight on that. Um, the meters, that's, uh, similar to the EV project. We're replacing a bunch of water meters in the community and, uh, thought they'd all be done in twenty twenty-two, but they weren't, so I have to pay for some of that out of twenty twenty-three. Solarization project at some lift stations, and then, uh, the ERP project that we're doing, which you're gonna see a presentation on that, um, after this one. Um, that's just a shift again from one year to another. So for twenty twenty-three in total, uh, the total, uh, budget amendment is six point five million dollars. We will have revenue increases in, in the form of insurance recoveries and a grant revenue of one point one million dollars for a net increase of five, five point three. And if, if you take that general fund portion we talked about, plus the items on the last slide, uh, that's about six point four of the six point five million dollars. So pause for just a second in case there's any more questions on twenty twenty-three before we move to twenty twenty-four.
Yes.
Mayor. So, um, I think we're actually, um, in the presentation portion of the public hearing. So I'd really like
Opened up the public hearing.
So, so this is the presentation in advance, so it'd be better if we could let Troy finish his presentation and then take public testimony and then be able to have the discussion and the questions. So if it's all right, if you could please just kind of hold your questions, write them down, keep track of that. Um, we wanna make sure that we're giving a clear presentation. People have an opportunity to provide, uh, public testimony in the, in the hearing portion of it, and then we can, um, carry on with, uh, discussion, uh, amongst the council. It's just a little bit different than our typical considerations.
Okay, moving on to twenty twenty-four. Uh, so there's gonna be a lot of great stuff going on in twenty twenty-four, starting with community development. Uh, you may recall from earlier this year, we received a half million dollar grant from the EPA to study contamination at the brewery site. Uh, so that'll be taking place. Um, uh, similarly, we received a two hundred thousand dollar grant from the Department of Ecology to study contamination at the old Wash Dot site on Capitol Boulevard. So the two, two great projects, uh, where we'll be seeing what, seeing what we're dealing with in terms of contamination and grant funded, so we need the expenditure authority to do the work, but we will be reimbursed. Um, as you also know, we've got the comprehensive plan update coming up. Uh, we're gonna need some outside consulting help with that. Uh, for about two hundred thousand dollars, and, uh, you may or may not know, uh, our Community Development Department has been extremely busy the last several years. Um, building permits are at an all-time high, and, uh, they could really use an extra senior planner to help move things along and keep up with their very heavy workload. We had in the current budget, or have in the current budget, a position, a, a new position for a risk manager. As we started looking at that position and talking about it, uh, we decided we would be better served actually with an assistant city attorney. Um, an assistant city attorney could still, uh, do risk management for us, but then they would also be available as a backstop to our city attorney, who has, uh, no help, uh, right now. Um, again, uh, audit costs coming up. The more federal grants we get, the more audits we have to get, and those, the costs of those keep going up as well. Um, insurance again for the general fund, and then a small, uh, portion for fire there. Uh, over in the Parks Department, um, thanks to inflation and supply chain issues, uh, the forklift that they need to replace, uh, costs twice as much as it used to. Uh, they'd like to, uh, move a department assistant one to a department assistant two. And then we would like to make the volunteer coordinator, uh, a full-time position instead of a three-quarter time. And, uh, also like to make the arts specialist a full-time position instead of a halftime position. Uh, South Pugent Sound lease for the Water Department, uh, here again. Uh, good news with this is, as they were able to identify some, uh, costs in their budget that they probably won't incur this uh, year or in twenty twenty-four, that'll help offset some of that high cost, uh, for the new, uh, space over at the South Pugent Sound. Um, would like to get a new project inspector to help with the many city projects that are going on. Right now, we're paying a lot of overtime and sometimes, uh, contracting for services for that. Um, also like to get a new, uh, utility engineer, so both those positions will be paid for out of the utility funds. And then, um, a new maintenance worker in the street department to help keep up with, um, uh, the, the vegetation on the sides of the roads and streets and in the roundabouts and things like that. Uh, this is actually not a budget increase, but we wanted to make everybody aware. Uh, so, um, the non-represented staff, uh, we're proposing a four percent cola, which is what was budgeted for. Um, in addition, right now, uh, non-reps, uh, we only pay for about seventy-five percent of dependent coverage in their, uh, health benefits. And you can see there that, uh, we pay much more for police, uh, teamsters and fire. So we're proposing to bump that from seventy-five percent to eighty percent. Um, it still doesn't get them all the way there with the represented folks, but it moves them closer. Um, and the great news is that fits within what we've already budgeted for health insurance. Okay, so total twenty twenty-four all funds, uh, it's two point four million dollars. Um, all those things on that list right there, we've talked about already, and that, that list alone is two point two of the two point four million dollars. Uh, in the general fund, uh, one point seven million dollar increase, so this, this is not in addition to, this is part of that two point four million. Uh, one point seven million of that is general fund, um, and, uh, that list, again, we've talked about pretty much everything there. Uh, that represents one point four of the one point seven million. Um, and, oops, there's yeah, wrong direction. Sorry about that. Okay, um, what's not in here, but I think it's in a couple of slides, is there is, there is some revenue, uh, in that too with those environmental grants, so. Okay, and here's the one Councilmember Alt Hauser was waiting for. Um, so in the Budget and Finance Committee, we presented to them a couple of weeks ago, and, uh, they suggested a new program for low-income senior housing repairs. Uh, we took that information back to the mayor who came up with a proposal, uh, for a pilot program. This would be one-time funding. Would be coming from general fund, fund of balance. Um, and we would add this to the Health and Human Services line item. Uh, we'd add twenty-five thousand dollars to that. And just some things to keep in mind, um, for next year when that takes place. Um, there'd be a number of, of things to consider. Um, one, we don't have a revenue source for it. Um, uh, we don't wanna make too many more demands on staff time, uh, who are already stretched pretty thin. Uh, we'll need to think about how we administer something like that, and then, of course, uh, be aware of legal restrictions around the gift of public funds and things like that. Um, so uh, there'll be a lot to work out when we, when we get there. Okay, so total for the general fund, one point seven million. There's about nine hundred thousand, um, in revenue for a net increase of, uh, eight hundred and seventy-one thousand.
Hold on, go back to that, please.
No, wait, no, wait.
Okay, and then some coming attractions. Uh, these, these are not, this is nothing for this budget amendment. Just wanted to give you a sneak peek of some things we'll bring back to you next year. Uh, we're working on a non-represented salary survey right now. Um, for years, the, the, uh, unionized, uh, portions of our workforce, uh, have been, uh, outpacing the non-represented staff, and so we're looking into that. Uh, right now, we have, uh, negoti- union negotiations going on with police and with the teamsters. Uh, so things will be coming back to you in twenty twenty-four for that. Um, I mentioned the insurance presentation earlier. Um, we'll start building the new biennial budget next year. It'll already be time to start the budget for twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six. Um, and then at City Hall, um, we recently had a Homeland Security audit, and we're just finishing up an energy audit right now. And so, um, we will be looking at, um, are there, are there some things that we can do to increase safety and security at City Hall? And, um, are there, um, some opportunities for some environmental upgrades? Well, those will be coming to you in the future. Uh, as I mentioned, we presented at Budget and Finance Committee, uh, so today we're doing this presentation. We'll have a public hearing, and then you may adopt this tonight if you choose to do so. And that is all I had for this presentation.
Okay, now they can have questions. All right. So I'm going to open up for the public hearing. Um, so do we have any, do we have a sign-up sheet? Has anyone signed up? I'm opening the public comment portion of our public hearing. Is there a sign-up sheet? Okay.
And no one online.
All right. Anyone in the audience want to speak to the public hearing? With that, I will close the public hearing, uh, the public comment portion of the public hearing. And now we can have questions. And Councilmember Schneider.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Troy, for the presentation. So I have several qu- questions, and I need clarified if you would. I'll start with the first one with, with the arts specialist. I see that you have a budget for twenty-four thousand, six hundred and eighty-four. Now, it's my understanding that with that, she is not gonna be made full-time until we have the arts commission. So when we put that figure out, is that for the six months or for a total of the year?
I believe that's for six months, um, at that full-time increment, so going from the halftime to the full-time. Chuck would probably be better to answer that. I don't come up with every number, um, on this. We, we rely on our directors and our staff to provide some of that for us. But that's, that's my understanding.
Chuck, Chuck is on his way.
Oh. Welcome, Chuck.
And I could barely hear out there, so Councilmember Schneider, if you could reiterate that question, please.
Thank you, Chuck. So I noticed under the arts specialist, there's a figure of twenty-four thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars. And it's my understanding that she will not be hired full-time until we get actual arts commission. So my question is, is that for six months' pay, or is that would be her yearly salary?
I believe that would be the six, the six-month pay. And I, I think we had explained the, the reasoning for the, the delay as we, you know, one, budgetarily, but two, as we're working through the creation of the arts commission and and the bylaws that are gonna contr- are, uh, dictate what they do. Um, by the time we get that put together and select commissioners and have them in place, uh, that would be about the time that that position would go full-time and then help support, uh, the commission.
Okay. And one other question on that. Let's say, for instance, that the arts commission stalls and it doesn't get, uh, completed and filled till maybe, say, September. Are we still gonna offer that the beginning of June, or are we gonna move that on to September when actually the art commission is put together?
No, it'd be my full intent to do it by June. Um, and if the art commission is somehow delayed, um, moving that position to full-time in June will only speed that process up so that we can get it, get it completed in a timely manner and not, not have it taken till September.
Okay, thank you for that. I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And so I have two other questions here, and I'm not sure about this one, if we have to go back to the slide, I'm not sure, but with the general fund pilot program for twenty-five thousand dollars. So I, I, my question is, without seeing in front of me, is I know we have Building Together and some other nonprofits that do take care of repair work and stuff like that. Wouldn't we be better off donating, giving them that money and let them take care of the responsibilities, the helping homeowners instead of us? And like you said, we're short of staff.
I, I think preliminarily, um, that would probably be best. Um, that way it's not creating extra work for us, but that's something that the, the council and the Budget and Finance Committee will have to talk about and decide.
Okay, thank you for that. And then my final question is, and I hope I understand this correctly, so we, I'm talking about the SPSCC and Dan Smith and, and, and his, his, uh, group going to the new office on that, on that property. And I know when we were at Public Works, there was two options, and I can't recall what the other one was, but we chose the SPSCC because they were the cheaper of the two options. So now I'm wondering, since the price has gone up, do we need to go back to that and see what the other co- uh, property was, and maybe that is more cost-effective than actually going on the community college properties?
Yeah, so they looked at, uh, some space, uh, in one of the state buildings nearby, uh, as well as the South Pugent Sound space. Um, and the South Pugent Sound space was a, a little bit less expensive. Uh, there was also, as I recall, a good nexus, uh, between, you know, they've got Percival Creek there, they've got col- the college right there, so they could have an internship program. Um, and so there, those were some kind of added benefits. I don't think the construction, so, so the big thing, the, the, the price of the lease itself hasn't changed. Um, it's just more than we had anticipated when we built the budget. Um, when we went out and looked at those, examined those two spaces, that's when we found out it's, it's way more than we thought it was gonna be. Um, and then, um, I think the construction to, to convert the spaces to, to the kind of layout and form that they want, uh, would probably be the same regardless of which space it was.
Okay, thank you very much.
No problem.
Right. Councilmember, um, all right, Councilmember Agabi.
Troy.
Uh, do you wanna speak closer to my phone?
Troy, can you please go back to that slide? Uh, my focus is mostly on, uh, what the deficit is. And I've asked you now this question because I remember back in twenty-two, last year, our deficit was, was at about seven hundred thousand, I think, maybe a million or so. So it looked like it's gone up and it continued to go up. So what is the projected, uh, deficit within the next, uh, three budget cycles?
Well, we don't
If we keep going, if we keep going on this trajectory.
Are you talking about the financial cliff that we talked about?
Yes.
Yeah, so that, um, So we're actually going to work on changing the name of that and presenting that in a different way in the future. But right now, that's, that's kicked out to about, we recently did a new revenue and expenditure projection. That's kicked out to at least 2028. And so there's, there's no deficit right now, but there is, you know, the structural deficit where we're limited to 1% increases in the property tax, but expenditures are, are going up, you know, five to seven percent a year. So, so what's been happening and what we hope will continue because it's, we, we all know it's, it's difficult to get that state law change for the property tax increments. But we're basically outrunning it with growth. Because of, of strong growth in the city, new businesses, sales taxes going up and things like that. That's what's helping us keep ahead of that curve, so to speak.
So my last question, given the vote, I think the voters approved the new increase for the law enforcement and the amount that we would share in that particular bucket. Is there any? I know it's recent. Have you thought of what that will do to our budget? Was it going to add at least some, some dollars to the bottom line?
Yes, it'll, it'll def- that, that new portion of sales tax will definitely help public safety. So it's, it's specific to public safety, police or fire. We haven't had too many conversations yet about how to spend that money. We're waiting for one to make sure it passed before we spent a bunch of time on it. And then for two, it, it doesn't start, I think, until April 1st. And we don't expect to see any actual funds coming to us until June. Okay, so, so there will be more conversations about that. I'm sure the Public Health and Safety Committee will take that up and will certainly work that into the next budget that we build next year.
Councilmember Alterser?
My question was actually about the voter initiative that passed and that answered my question, so thank you.
Okay.
Councilmember Jefferson?
Um, yes, Troy, thanks again. I like to see clear pictures, spreadsheets. I'm a spreadsheets person. Charts, I want to see red, green. When should we start to worry? When, what, when might we need to, to cut the budget? We had a 6.5 million increase. What does our expenditures looks like? What is our shortfall? Just show me the bottom line. Show me revenue versus expenses. And this just doesn't show a picture to me. So maybe we might need to, to sit down and you can show it to me. Send me numbers so I can work with my spreadsheets. But I want to see a clear picture with red and green and how do we really look? Are we healthy? When are we starting to get unhealthy? When? That's my, am I making sense?
Absolutely, and I'd love to engage in a conversation with, with you on that. We can definitely share some spreadsheets and go over numbers. We are healthy and, and we're constantly watching. We monitor our sales collections, sales tax collections monthly. We're always trying to keep abreast of what's going on in the world economy. As we know, it's not, it's not just the US. Something happens in China or in Russia and it can affect everything. So we're, we're constantly keeping on top of it. And I'd be glad to, to help, share some numbers with you.
Right, we have big items. Our RFA failed. We need body cameras, you know. When are we going to get those body cameras? Is it two years? Can we afford it in three years? So we can let our police officers know, this is what we're, this is what we're looking at. These are the calls that I would like us to make. Okay, we're red now for those body cameras, but we're going to be yellow in, in a year or two. We're going to be green in three years. So those are the type of projections that I would like to see and the calls that I would like to make so we can give them a good response.
So I, I just might hop in on this. Right now, we're doing a budget adjustment for this last year. We will be looking at new budgets and then we'll be working on the new budget year.
Yeah, my apologies, Troy, City Manager, I'm just like off track here.
Keep those ideas in mind for when we talk the future. We're just doing budget adjustments right now.
Thank you.
So you're welcome.
And I would say, please come talk to Troy and I'm happy to join as well. He has all kinds of spreadsheets that are actually okay to read if you're not as, too much of a spreadsheet geek even. So Troy does a great job and, and I've actually asked a lot of the same questions. Councilmember Jefferson in terms of projections. So he's, he's actually done, I don't remember how many decades worth of projections of expenses and revenues in, in the context of trying to help understand impacts of collective bargaining agreements, impacts of large projects. And I think, you know, Troy's characterized the, you know, it looks like a lot of money that we've increased in expenditures. We're doing well with sales tax right now. We also have staff that are being very creative and innovative and being, bringing lots of grant revenue in. You know, the, the grant revenue, $700,000 just in environmental work that we're able to do. So appreciate the concern. We plan to have time in late February. We're going to be giving you some information and asking you as a council, what is the council's priority? Because we're going to be spending the majority of 2024 developing the biennial budget that'll be in effect for 2025 and 2026.
Good, my apologies, Troy, I wasn't tracking, you were.
No worries.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. So I, I would say that we, do we, we are able to take action this evening if you choose to do so. So I'm going to turn on microphones. So we can certainly take action this evening to, to approve this, the proposed amendment to, a proposed ordinance. Councilmember Rothausser?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we adopt ordinance number O2023-015, budget amendment number one.
May I ask a question?
Okay, we need a second first.
I second.
Okay, now Councilmember Agabi.
So some of the items that Troy presented has been amended to the budget. In my opinion, they should have been subject to a work section so that we can at least do the nail year and see how those items are going to be a portion. So for example, the, the 25,000 for senior repair. The first time I had, but that I asked a question, how do we determine who qualifies? And what is the cutoff for that? And that was the last I had tonight. And I'm surprised, not surprised, take back my word, that we are doing an amendment that I thought haven't been a hot second. And I'm thinking in my head that if we're adding to our expenditure, it should be a general deliberation of how we're adding that money and to what extent or duration that addition holds.
So what I think you're saying, so this, in my, my understanding, we would just be adding the funds. How we do, do the program will come to you at a later date and then you can make those decisions. This is just to put the funds on a spreadsheet so that we can make those decisions later in the year.
And they are not being spent yet?
No, this is just the budget.
All right, I take back my word.
This is just, this is just the budget. We haven't spent anything. That will come later. All right, any other questions? All right, now I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. All right, the motion carries. And remember, we will be doing a ton more budgeting because we have, this is the first year of the biennial budget. We will have another year end adjustment to finish out the 23, 24 budget. And then all of next year, we're going to be working on the 25, 26 budget, which we will have, will be starting from ground zero and having fresh discussions on what all of those things look like. So for newer council members, I think the biennial budgets are probably a little bit more confusing. But believe me, it's a lot less work than what we used to do when we used to do annual budgets and had to go through the whole entire budget process every single year. So now we just do adjustments and then do the actual budget every two years.
And that, no, may I stand corrected?
So hopefully that, so hopefully that helps, so.
Yes, it does.
Great. All right, so now we are to council considerations and it's Enterprises Resource Planning System contract amendment one, and we still get Troy on this one.
It's my night tonight. So you'll recall, we, let's see, December 2021, City Council approved a contract with Tyler Technologies to replace our, our aging and end of life ERP system, which we're still partially using right now with a new system. And are you pulling up the, okay? Okay, so we started on this almost two years ago. Again, approved December 2021. In January 2022, we started actually working on the new system. And so the amendment before you tonight is, is a very small dollar amount, dollar amendment. But it's been a while since we've talked about it with the full council. So we wanted to, to bring this back and give everybody an update on how things are going. So the first module we implemented is financials. And I'm happy to say that we went live on April 3rd of this year. It was a lot of work, a lot of staff time, and we finished on time and under budget. And by all accounts, this first module was a great success. Even before we went live with this one, we started the next module, which is HCM, but it's, it's payroll and human resources. And what we started finding is basically the pace was, was too much and too fast. The schedule that was laid out before us, which we'll go over here for you in a second, we're doing two or three modules at a time and it was really stressing out and starting to burn out our staff. And so to me, and I'm sure you'll agree, if we finish this whole system and we finish on time and on budget, but we've lost all of our people along the way because we worked them too hard, that's not really a success. So some things we started learning as we started going down the, the payroll and human resources route. Police and fire have very special systems that they use right now, not just for their timekeeping, but it helps them with scheduling and a number of other things. So, so that was one of the first changes to the project where we have to adjust and help integrate their existing systems with our new system rather than being able to put them just on the new system. They have very, very compelling business reasons for that, and so we're going to support that. As we, as we kind of turned the corner and implemented, implemented the first module, again, in addition to the stress we were seeing in our staff, most of our HR, well, our whole HR department basically turned over. You might recall, we lost James, the HR director back in February. That position went unfilled for a number of months due to the transition with the city administrator. And John didn't want to hire a new HR director. He wanted the new city administrator to be able to do that. Then we lost Lacey Neal, who was our HR analyst, and then Julie announced her retirement. So it was, it kind of, and we were already going to have to do something different and then that really forced our hand because we can't implement an HR module without an HR department. So this is what our original schedule looked like. Those first three bars you see there, the first two, that's actually the same module, but there's the finance piece and then there's the IT piece in the background. So both finance and IT were working really hard for a long time to get this done. The next one, you can't see that very well because it's so small, but it's kind of a post-go-live phase where we fix bugs and work on things that come up afterwards. And then the next one down is the HR and payroll module. So that was set to go or scheduled to go live October 1st this year. And a little later on, the presentation, we'll get to another slide that has the new proposed timeline in it. So you can see that. So we'll just, we'll go through this very briefly. An example of some of the turnover that we've had. Had several different people in a project manager role, a couple of different database administrators, a couple of different finance directors, and we're on our third ASD director. The accounting supervisors turned over a couple of times. Senior, our senior accountant retired in January. Got a replacement, Nisa, who's doing a great job. She started in February. Our project accountant, we, we lost one. The position was vacant for six months, filled it, lost another one. And so we have Joanne Fletcher, who's actually been with the city for about nine years. She stepped up into that position. And again, HR folks. And then here's kind of a, just a picture of the timeline and, and some of the, the losses that we've had in personnel. And with that turnover on the city side of things, obviously, we lose institutional knowledge anytime somebody leaves. But, but more so specific to this project, the, the key people that have been helping on it, we're making process decisions, you know, we're analyzing futures or current state and future state and making configuration decisions and decisions on controls. And then, then when they leave, whoever replaces them doesn't have any of that background and history of, of the system. So it's, it's challenging enough to come in and learn a new job anyway. But then to, to try to catch up on a system that's halfway implemented is, is very difficult. We've also had some vendor issues in this project. Our vendor has also had high turnover and, and burnout. And so we've had some people who are supposed to help, you know, be helping us and training us on the new system. And sometimes they're brand new. We've literally had someone, it was their first day, their first project. To, to their credit, when we've sat down and complained to them, they've been responsive about giving us someone more experienced. Or sometimes we just accidentally get somebody who's really good and we, we say, we want to keep this person. Don't you dare take them away from us and they listen. So that's good. And in some cases, they've kind of, we feel like they've oversold and underdelivered on their product somewhat. You know, salespeople tell you one thing like, oh, it's going to be really easy. We'll just import all your data, no problem. Well, that's not exactly true, actually not at all true. That a lot of the imports and data validation and things like that, it's extremely manual. It's taking up a lot of staff time. And so that's, that's another challenge with the project. So this is an illustration of some of the timelines. The, the flat blue line is what our vendor predicted it would take for staff time from the finance department. And the, the dark blue line is what it actually took. Similar with project management. We were actually planning initially to staff up to that yellow line and have two full time project managers on this. But due to staffing shortages in HR, we had to have Julia Magarva go back to HR instead of working on the project. But even at that, the one project manager is, is way more, spends way more time on it than they anticipated. And that one project manager is Matt Ames. You may know him, he's been with us, I think, for 20 years now. He's doing a great job and as a good project manager should, he's identified a number of risks and documented those. At this point, we've pretty much talked about them, but the high risk things like turnover of critical employees, vendor consultants that lack experience. Our staff lack time to reinforce learning. You know, we don't have extra staff to fill in for the staff who are in these trainings. And sometimes these training and configuration sessions, a lot of times they'll go six or seven hours a day, three or four days in a row. And now staff have to go back, catch up on all the work they've missed while, while doing this. And so it's, it's, it's been very challenging that way. This is the proposed timeline. So you can see as this stretches out, we'll be working one module at a time. When that module is done, we will start the next module. It's, it's still going to be challenging because again, we don't have extra staff. It's it's still going to be challenging because again, we don't have extra staff or or backups. But much better than doing two or three modules at a time. The the picture here has the stretching out to mid twenty twenty seven. We're actually going to try to finish by the end of twenty twenty six, but we'll, of course, we'll have to see how that goes. The total project amount, this includes the contract plus city staff time was estimated at two million dollars. The actual contract with the vendor is eight hundred ninety one thousand. Phase one, we were twenty thousand under budget on that contract. We hope to achieve similar results in phase two. Some of that is because we're not having a lot of travel. Started this, there were still, we were masking, we're doing a lot of telework and things like that. And so haven't had them out here very much. And they they seem to be pretty successful doing that remotely. So so we may end up saving more. The amendment amount is for seventy eight hundred dollars. And that's just additional staff time that could be needed as this, or not staff time, excuse me, vendor time. Vendor consultant time as this project stretches out a little bit. We may not even need to need to spend that because we've already got some savings, but that's that's what they've suggested, and we we don't want to shortchange ourselves. We want to be able to have that vendor support when we need it. And so the recommendation in front of you tonight is to authorize the mayor to sign amendment number one with Tyler Technologies.
Any questions?
Looked like you had a guy to signature.
Yes, Councilmember Alt hauser.
Thanks, Mayor. I I mean, we knew that this was going to be really challenging when we embarked on it, but it was also a project that we probably should have embarked on like ten years ago. But I I guess my question is, so primarily, the amendment is doing two things. There's the seventy eight hundred dollars. But then we're also adding two years to the timeline, correct?
That's correct.
Which is sort of reflective of those challenges we've had with implementation. The the question I had is on the chart that had the financials that are sort of phased out on the timeline. It said municipal financials is on hold. I thought we completed that portion. It said on hold on the left-hand portion of it. But.
I'm not sure why it said that.
Like the it's the first one. Yeah, isn't is there an, that was the original timeline, but the current timeline has one point O on hold, like a later slide.
Very last one with the long timeline.
Yeah, it says on hold for municipal financials at the top. Is that an error?
That's an error.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Thank you.
Good eyes. I I can, I have to strain to read it from that.
I just got a new prescription.
Like to make the motion.
All right, go ahead.
I move that we authorize the mayor to sign contract amendment number one with Tyler Technologies.
Go ahead.
Let's see, we're in so much in a hurry to get it done.
All right, so it's been moved by Councilmember Jefferson and seconded by Councilmember Agabe. Any discussion on the motion? With that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Troy.
Thank you. All right, so next item is committee reports. And we have a couple of council members that are absent this evening that is scheduled for the report. So if there's not another council member who can give the report, we can certainly postpone it until the next council meeting.
Yesterday.
Okay, we'll postpone. So we'll postpone the Public Health and Safety Committee meeting until the next one. We'll make note of that. General Government Committee, Councilmember Alt Hauser.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. The General Government Committee will be meeting next on December thirteenth. We continue our journey through the city's comprehensive plan, evaluating a few different elements of that as we prepare for its update. We will be discussing three different elements of the conplan at that meeting, the Economic Development Plan, the update for lands for public purposes, and the comprehensive plan update regarding utilities.
Great, thank you. Public Works Committee, we will postpone that one. Councilmember Swarthad is out this evening. And then Budget and Finance Committee, and we just voted on that. So we have finished the budget amendments. So that was taken care of in our action earlier. So now we will move to Mayor's City Administrator Report and Administrator Parks. Do you want to start?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of quick things for the council members tonight. I just wanted to let you know that last week, Thursday, Friday, we had a management team retreat off-site. It was really very successful, I believe. It included the management team, so primarily the directors. And then we also had work time with the assistant directors, the people that back up our directors when they are gone. And then we were also honored to have the mayor with us on Friday for the the full, the full day. So we worked hard. A lot of what we did, we have some bullet points. We were focusing on how to be effective leaders. We were working to create our team processes. We've been focusing on a citywide approach and perspective. And we are acknowledging that it is all a work in progress as we begin to work together as an effective team. The other thing I'd like to let you know is we have a new executive assistant. She's new to that position, but not new to City Hall. Brittany McClanahan is the new executive assistant. She was previously with the Community Development Department as their department administration, administration person. And so she started last week on Thursday, and we're happy to have her. And we are sorry for the impact to Community Development Department. I think I owe Mike something, probably a coffee or something. But we're going to work really hard to make sure that Community Development is able to take up that slack. So fortunately, Brittany is able to provide some ongoing coverage to Mike's department until we're able to backfill that position. So happy to have Brittany on board, and you will likely be hearing and seeing more of her. If you have questions about your schedule or want to ask her help in terms of scheduling a meeting for you, please feel free to reach out to Brittany. And then I can answer any questions. Thank you. So thank you, Councilmember Agabe. I was asked to attend the board meeting for the Thurston County Economic Development Committee, Economic Development Council. I was honored to do that last week at their lunch meeting. I essentially introduced myself, and I talked a little bit about the philosophy around economic development in terms of the role of the public sector, ensuring that we have a good positive environment for business and private investment. And of course, we talked a little bit about the brewery redevelopment project in terms of brownfield redevelopment. And I hope to come to you in the next couple of months and give you an update on that and more directly. But it was a, it was a warm welcome, and I was really pleased to be able to provide an introduction of myself to the Economic Development Council. Did I miss anything, Councilmember?
Actually, I was going to say you did a very, very good job, which is why I reminded you to talk about that, too.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so I attended the Intercity Transit Authority Board meeting on November fifteenth. And with that, we did a public hearing on their draft strategic plan for the twenty twenty four through twenty twenty nine years. We also declared dialo lift vehicles to go to surplus with a fair market value of one hundred and thirty five thousand dollars. We also we received a very interest. So we've been working at Intercity Transit on zero zero emissions and what the final analysis is. And we've had a consultant who's been working with Intercity Transit for that. One, it's very complicated, trying to guess what the technology is going to be and which one we're going to do. Because there is an enormous amount of infrastructure cost with each and every choice you make. So you want to be very mindful of which choice you make because the it is either electric vehicles or hydrogen fuel cell. Probably will be a combination now that the hydrogen fuel cell federal grant money is available, that might make it a little bit more doable. And it will be also greener than what is available today. So we're still working on that and still discussing that. That'll take us a bit of time to do. And the class of the the commercial drivers of the operators class of twenty twenty three dash O five, so that's their fifth drivers instruction class for the year. All of them passed their class, and they all were passed for their commercial driver's licenses. So that is very helpful to get more bus drivers out on this road so that we can have better transit service. And that, and then the Patterson Street Martin Way Park and Ride. That there's been, there there's some temporary issues with the construction there. So they're having to shuttle staff back and forth. One of the areas where they're going to have staff parking now has got needs in engineering design because there is an air issue with that land. It's sinking in that one spot, so they need to make sure that they redesign it. So it's creating quite a bit of a transit issue for the transit drivers to get to the transit buses. So it things can sometimes get really complicated in very big construction processes. And so with that, I think that is all that I have from that. I also want to just wish everyone, before we go to council reports, a very nice and happy Thanksgiving and and enjoy family. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and move it to council reports. And Councilmember Snyder, do you mind starting?
No, I would not mind. Thank you for that, Mayor. I do not have a report, but I would like to make a comment if I'm allowed.
All right.
Okay, well, thank you. So it was mentioned earlier tonight that we would engage with the community in the upcoming weeks addressing the homeless issue and city parks. I would like to suggest that we move that to the beginning of next year because of the holiday season. And that we probably get greater participation if we waited till until January or so, if that's possible. And that's
I believe that was the plan because it's going to take us a little bit of time. So you you'll probably most likely be seeing that in January.
Thank you. And that's all I have to say. Thank you, Mayor. Happy Thanksgiving to everybody as well.
But we, and again, Charlie, we have not had that conversation exactly when. So we'll have some time, need some time to arrange that.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, Councilmember Agabe.
It is not every day that you go to a function and you have a speaker talking about something that they have done. That gladdens your heart and makes you say, oh, yes, that's the way it ought to be. So our city manager did a very, very splendid job. So when Jonah retired, I thought, well, you know, it was going to take a very long time for whoever was coming to step into that role and be knowledgeable what is, what what is happening historically and what is going on. So when Lisa came to EDC last week, Wednesday, right? So the presentation started with talking about herself, and she was able to weave that into what we're doing at Townwater. For me, I haven't lived yet since I two thousand and six. There are a bunch of stuff that you see around you. You just kind of see them, but you don't really notice what the input is. She was a very, very, very good at educating me and weaving that into what we do at Townwater. So for that, I say thank you very, very much, and thank you for making me proud. I always like intelligence and when when it occurs. So having said that, I went to EDC, I attended EDC last week, Wednesday. And of course, I talked about Lisa being part of that. And then we had a presentation, well, not necessarily a presentation, but the Nisko Indian Tribe was supposed to have given given us a presentation about the Quimott Resort in Village. But Michael was able to answer questions and do some presentation. So essentially, pretty much what we had in the chamber was we were told, but in a more different format. And that was for that. So for JASCOM, which I attended on the Tuesday prior to my EDC meeting, we were focused mostly on selecting a site and talking about the criteria that would lead to choosing a site in Thurston County. And I don't want to go into details because there's a lot of selection criteria that we will have to consider. So we haven't exactly set it on a particular criterion yet, other than we're talking about how we're going to do that. And the the yardstick, the measurement yardstick is five or ten miles from Lacey City Hall. Yeah, but so not sure how that is going to work out because the city of Lacey, as the primarily, as the primary, what's what I'm looking for, the custodian, they will have a say so in how much they're willing to fork out and how much we as city council, Townwater, Olympia will pay into that side selection. So it is all up in flux. So that is my report. There should be more, I I hope. I'm thinking January or February, when we finally meet. We don't have a budget, and our budget is going to be deliberate upon the fourth of December.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Jefferson.
Yes, Mayor, on the fifteenth of November, I attended the EMS committee meeting. And we have our advanced life support instructor arriving in January. He has signed his offer letter. And Mayor, you were talking about all those people bus, potential bus drivers for that training where they all passed. Well, there's an EMT training program for the county. And they had five candidates where if if they're certified nationally, then we we bring them in and we give off them training. They pass the exam and they're getting paid during the training. Then we offer them that position of EMT. Well, all five of those candidates failed. Four of them were military and one was a civilian. Well, what happens in the military is they are combat medics. They treat head injuries, they treat gunshot wounds. And the average age of the person that they treat is twenty-two years old. The average age of a call, emergency call out here is a fifth, is a sixty-five-year-old with comorbidities. So those medics were having a hard time with that. So what is the fixed? I asked the director, how was he getting these military candidates? And he said, friends are friends, basically word of mouth. So I know the transition office on base where they prepare soldiers, medics included, for job hiring. So I I got them talking. So now he can go on base and recruit and prepare these potential soldiers and potential candidates to pass the exam. Chief Wicks, if if you would like me to connect you for if we need police officers or and you want that base office, just let me know. And then so when it's time for hiring, we can go on base and get some of those candidates that are coming out. Let's move on to the Experience Olympian Beyond meeting that I had today. The survey is closed for destination management. Almost a thousand people participated, which is the best participation rate ever. It was a little long, but good questions was asked, and they got good data and good feedback. Next is a vision workshop in January tenth and eleventh, where the public forum are going to be asked about the vision and and the priorities. One last thing, the the closure of the Olympia Hotel at Capital Lake is going to be closed after the thirteenth of December. And it looks like it's going to be turned into affordable housing. This is going to be some lost revenue for Olympian Beyond for those taxes looking around. This is going to be some lost revenue for Olympian Beyond for those uh, taxes looking around $35,000. And that's one of the um, biggest hotels where you can have group booking. So we only have maybe around three uh, in the area after they're, they close. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Alt Hauser.
Uh, thank you. Yeah, yeah. Okay. Thank you, Mayor. I attended the Regional Housing Council meeting this past Wednesday. I think there were two noteworthy items that are, that are worth sharing to update you all on. The first was that we passed a slate of, uh, I, I would describe them as priorities for um, various jurisdictions to consider to add to their agenda when working with the state on new funding or new policies when the legislature convenes next year. Um, the top three from that slate included increased funding to meet the need for rent assistance for low-income renters in Thurston County. Long-term operational funds uh, for programs established and paid for by the Governor's Right-of-Way Initiative. Um, as well as increased capital funding through the Housing Trust Fund for the development and preservation of affordable housing. So those will be items that we could consider when we formulate our agenda for working with the state in the future. The other item I wanted to share was that there was an extended discussion, um, and a presentation from an advocate on behalf of a mobile home park in Olympia that is being sold. Um, there was a law passed last year that said that when mobile home parks are facing sale or foreclosure, that notice is sent to jurisdictions so that we can be aware of those as potential opportunities to preserve affordable housing. This was one such park where a notice was sent out. The advocate who was presenting was essentially asking the Regional Housing Council to try to find some modicum of funding to help bridge the gap so that the people who live there would be able to purchase the park. So they would own the land in perpetuity and would then be able to pay that sum back in the future. Um, and we didn't have a lot of good news to share with those folks, very sadly. Um, the RFP process that we have is, is pretty defined within our bylaws. And this came at a time where we were outside of that process. So our ability to even act on a request like that was limited. But I think it did really highlight an issue that not only is Olympia facing, but we know that we're facing too. Because there's at least one mobile home park in our city. It's going to be up for sale in the next 12 months, maybe more than that in the future. As the value of land continues to increase and providing housing becomes a perpetually more profitable industry for people to engage in, the incentive to convert mobile home parks and redevelop them will, will only increase. And there aren't funds really available to help people with the purchase of those. So I, what we did um, was sort of put a pin in that and then asked staff to come back with us for recommendations that we could look at for the future or ways that we could try to assist with gap funding, knowing that essentially the goal is to provide a low-income loan that would be paid back. Not to give money away, but to essentially provide a modicum of financing that would be affordable for people who are living there. So um, sadly, we do not have all the answers. We don't have all the funds. We're not able to give good news to the people who petitioned us that night. But um, I'm hopeful for the future that we can have a deliberate conversation and, and have a thoughtful conversation about, are there ways that we can participate in a more full extent in the future? It's probably not the case that we can do that alone. That's probably something that the State Housing Finance Commission, the state legislature also has to participate into. Um, and that's my report.
Great, thank you. All right. Anything else for the good of the order? With that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.